Next, we move back to our regular calendar under the City Manager. And this is a funding request for the Museum of Ventura County. Mr. Norman?
Madam Mayor, the Museum of Ventura County is a nonprofit organization whose mission is to celebrate the history, art, and culture of Ventura County and the Channel Islands through its collections, exhibits, educational programs, and publications. The museum houses the vast majority of Ventura County's historical artifacts, records, and documents. And although the museum is working to fully curate its entire collection, which is vast, a list has been provided by the museum that demonstrates the significance of its collection as it pertains to the history and culture of Camarillo. And in that list, the thing that really came to my mind was were the personal journals of Adolfo Camarillo, 10 volumes worth. And they span some 50 years. And so I imagine there's some really interesting stuff there in terms of the life of Adolfo Camarillo and his family at the ranch. Through the combination of a reduction in both county of Ventura and city of Ventura funding since the passage of Proposition 13, and more recently, a reduction in private sector donations during the past recession, the museum has been operating at a deficit during the past five years, and their current budget is unsustainable. Both the city of Ventura and the county of Ventura have approved one-time funding of $125,000 each for general museum operations. This funding is intended to allow the museum to operate for six months while the museum develops a new vision and sustainable business model that envisions the establishment of an $8 million endowment, the full curation of the museum's collections, partnerships with schools throughout the county, and expansion of its audience, all of this happening over the next five years as part of their recovery program. The city of Ventura had several conditions in approving its $125,000 grant, which I've outlined for you, and they pertain to information regarding the museum's programs and events and hours of operation. So the city itself could help bring to the public's awareness the museum and all that it offers. Also, a program and finance report for the six-month term, which would include the current budget, completed or in-progress milestones for the term of the agreement, and a financial statement for the reporting period. Also, monthly status reports, which would include attendance, financials, collections, and management and board development. I suggest that if the council desires to grant funds to the museum, that we accept the same reports that are given to the city of Ventura, rather than ask for customized reports ourselves and add to the administrative burden of the museum, which is trying to recover and get into a sustainable mode. So if you direct, staff will return to the council with a grant agreement memorializing the amount and purpose of the grant and the reporting requirements outlined above. And that concludes staff's report.
Do we have questions?
I don't have questions.
Okay. Questions? Mr. Kilday?
I just have a couple of questions. Is this a one-time request for funds?
Yes.
It is. And with that, they want to develop a business plan for sustainability. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. With this amount of money, will that be enough for them to be able to draw up a business plan that will sustain them? Or will they have to, you know, raise other funds from other entities, if you will?
Well, I'm hopeful that they would be able to raise funds from other entities, but my understanding is that they've made certain representations or commitments to both the city of Ventura and the county of Ventura, and they will be able to come up with that type of business plan.
And if they are not able to raise enough money for the plan, and the $10,000 that we give them, is there some flexibility that they can use it another way? Or do they return it to us? Or how does it go into another fund? Or is it where does that go? I'm just curious.
These funds will be used for general operating purposes to keep the museum running during this period, during the next six months, so that they can develop their recovery, excuse me, their recovery plans. We do have in the audience the interim executive director, Elena Brokaw, who may answer these questions if you desire.
Mr. Morgan, questions?
A few, just a couple. How many cities in Ventura County have contributed or been approached to contribute? Because Joel McCray was big in this county in history, historical. There's a lot of other things that you can pick out, Thousand Oaks, too, that contributed. You also had the famous family in Simi Valley that was big in those days, big rancher. And it goes on and on. Have you, of course, the oldest one, Santa Paula and Fillmore, have a lot of historical things. Have you approached those cities to see? And how many have indicated they want to join this, too?
If you could give your name and position for the record, and then start to answer our questions.
My name's Elena Brokaw. I'm the interim director at the Museum of Ventura County. So far, we have approached four governmental agencies, the city of Ventura and the county of Ventura, which have both responded with funding. We went to the Ventura County Transportation Commission, which is our landlord at the agricultural museum in Santa Paula, and they have been supporting us with building, maintenance. And we have approached the city of Santa Paula, which is providing in-kind services for the agriculture museum.
Okay. Have you approached Oxnard, which is much older than the rest of us, and a lot of history?
Not yet.
And Thousand Oaks, which is in better shape? But you're going to approach all of these, correct?
Yes.
And Simi, of course?
Yes.
Okay. Because I'd like to hear kind of what they're going to be doing, too, and contributing. I know another thing, too, is you've got to know that not just Adolfo Camarillo we're talking about. His father had a business in Ventura, too, when they purchased the land out here. And so it's the whole family has a history that reflects, that should be reflected in museums, too. Did the museum have a former foundation that lost the money?
No. The museum was supported with county dollars up until 1978, and then was entirely supported by the private sector, by individual donations, with a little bit of government funding coming in from the county and the city of Ventura, which has been very helpful. As city manager Dave Norman said, during the recession, obviously, like all nonprofits, support dipped. And for many years, the museum has been operating at a deficit, a rather big deficit, which has dipped entirely into the reserves. I've been the interim director for a year and a month, and right before I came in, the reserves were completely depleted. So since that time, we have been struggling to develop a sustainable business plan. And now with this infusion of money from our very valuable government partners, we are starting actually to work the business plan and develop it all at the same time.
Last question. There's a major event, because I had to fight through that event to get us to the Contract Cities, I mean, Channel Island League of Cities meeting, right in front of the library, in front of the museum, is a huge event that had bands and everything, the whole place is packed everywhere. Are you guys benefiting from that, I hope?
Is this the Fourth of July Street Fair? Or is it a different one?
No, different one.
Oh, at the Holidays?
Yes.
Yes. Actually, that's great that you asked that. That's the Downtown Ventura Partnership, which puts on the tree lighting each year. We just started conversations for this year to do a big community party on December 2nd in partnership with the Downtown Ventura Partnership and Food Share.
So you'll be able to hopefully earn some money from that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Let's go back to Mr. Kilday. You had questions. Was she able to answer your questions?
Yeah, well, say that we do give the $10,000. Is that going to be enough to develop your business plan? And it appears to me that you really need to get a business plan, you really need to go out and raise some money to try to make it whole and to make it viable. So I think the business plan is extremely important now. So my question is, do you have enough money? Or will you have enough money to, you know, develop a sustainable business plan in the future?
Not just with this $10,000. That costs more. We have actually put together a team of consultants that are working in the areas of collections, programs, exhibits, endowment, outreach, I think that's it. And so altogether, that costs more than $10,000. But this goes into the sustainability plan and the budget that we have put together to support the sustainability efforts that will get us to sustainability in five years.
So this money potentially, and other monies, is earmarked specifically for that expenditure. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Craven.
I have one question, and it hasn't been discussed tonight, but it's something I read in the Ventura County Star. And it said that that was the first time I realized that you were the curators and caretakers of the old county documents. And it said that the city of Ventura owns the property you're on. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I have a question, going back to what I've heard and read on all of this. It was my understanding that between the city of Ventura and the county of Ventura, they had both decided to contribute, I believe it was $125,000 apiece, to keep, to take you through the six months. And at the end of that six months, you were supposed to come up with a plan. So don't you have funding, or do you indeed have funding for six months' operation?
Yes.
Because that's what their money is for.
We have, the budget that we had going into this whole process was $1.1 million. With this additional funding, which, by the way, part of our proposal to the county and the city was to match, partially, not a one-to-one match, but like a third-to-one match, with private dollars. So with this funding that we've gotten from the city and the county, we've been able also to leverage that into $130,000 of additional money that would not have come in from the private sector. All of that is going into the consultant team that I talked about, and seven distinct efforts that we are going through to start, to develop the business plan and actually to start the business plan. With the city of Ventura, we provided a set of milestones that we have to reach. They are extremely ambitious, and we have to reach them by the end of January. They include securing a $1 million lead gift for the endowment. They include emptying out some of the collections. They include raising $125,000 of that private match, which we already did. So, and we are well on our way to achieving those.
Okay. So the $10,000, I don't know. I never saw a letter from you asking for the $10,000. So I don't know. Are you going out to all the cities with some kind of a campaign? Or is this just something, I think it was Mr. Trimbley brought to us?
Yes, you beat us to it. Part of our efforts is we are, actually, the board has appointed, has approved six new board members, and we are looking at a new board of 11 people, which is much more broadly representative of the county, with board members from Simi Valley and from Thousand Oaks. And our intent was working with the new board to go to the city councils and develop that and put in the proposals. But you beat us to the point.
And so the proposal would be a one-time amount of money? Or would we expect to see you every year, then?
What we are hoping for is to prove our value and our relevance to your community so that there will be ongoing funding. We haven't done that yet, so we need a little bit of time to do that.
One last question.
Let me finish mine. And someone mentioned the journals of Adolfo Camarillo. Are those the same ones that were, someone, I don't know if it was when you were there or not, had proposed that those be given over to our museum?
I was not there, so I'm not sure.
Actually, it was to the Ranch Foundation, not to the museum.
Not museum.
Okay. And the ranch turned it down?
Because they're not, they don't maintain that kind of documentation, and they didn't have, there was more than just the 12 journals, or however many journals there are, that there were a lot of papers and other things. And they aren't caretakers of that kind of thing.
No storage facilities for it.
They didn't have storage facilities for that much either.
Not at all.
And our museum doesn't either?
I don't believe they were asked.
Okay. Okay. Well, then obviously, we need to do something to preserve those. Mr. Morgan, you have another question?
Just one. I hear you're going to get somebody from Simi on the board and somebody from Thousand Oaks on the board, and here we are, if we commit and we have nobody on that group.
We have three representatives.
That's what I'm after.
From Camarillo.
We do. That's great.
Yes.
Okay.
From the city of Camarillo?
Three residents from the city of Camarillo.
From the unincorporated area who call themselves Camarillo?
No, they're from Camarillo.
That's what I was, no, a lot of people live in the estates in the Heights, and they will assure you they live in Camarillo. They assure us when they apply to be volunteers, and we have a requirement that you have to, that's why I ask, that you have to live here.
Well, I will find out if they are unincorporated and just honorary Camarilloans.
No, the post office designates where your address, what your address says, but whether you're a resident of the city of Camarillo or the postal zip code is something else.
I will find out.
Great, thank you. Mr. Kilday?
I don't mean to harp on the business plan. I'm sorry, that's kind of, it would appear to me that if you want to start this by January of 2017, you want to get your business plan going pretty early right now. So do you have a budget about how much that business plan is going to cost? Do you have a number out there?
Yes. It is $90,000 a year, actually, is what we're looking at to develop the business plan. That includes endowment work and collections work as well. And what I'm looking at for that is the cost of the consultants. That's the maximum.
Okay, so it's $90,000 a year. Does that mean that you're going to keep this consultant on a retainer, if you will? Will they be updating your business plan yearly? Or how is that going to work?
What we're doing is, that's a great question. Certain of the consultants, for example, the endowment consultants, that will be a longer-term project, because that consultant is going to be giving guidance to the endowment committee that has already, there are seven members of the endowment committee already on board on asking and on materials, et cetera. That will be a longer-term agreement with that consultant. The collections consultant, I don't know how long the collections consultant is going to be on, because it's a matter of going through all of our storage facilities. The outreach and the programs and exhibits consultants will be shorter-term, and those are going to be doing the bulk of their work before the end of this calendar year.
So you're confident you can have it in place by the January of 17?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Thank you.
And following up that January date, so the city of Ventura and the county are saying, if you don't prove to them that you're sustainable, then they cut off their funding? Is that basically what they?
Yes.
They said?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, boy. Okay. And then I'm on the city of Santa Paula this year at this meeting. Have they contributed? I mean, they've got one of the branch museums in their community. Have they?
They're providing in-kind services to us, probably very specifically in landscaping for a huge garden that we have in the back, which is just like cash, as far as we're concerned.
Right. And do you know how much that's for?
No, not yet.
It's worth?
Uh-uh.
Okay. Okay. Anything else you want to tell us while you're here?
Thank you.
All righty. Thank you. I do have one speaker sheet, if there's no other questions. Oh, we have with this, where is he? Jim Monahan's here. Jim, city council member from the city of Ventura. Good thing I didn't say anything bad about Ventura tonight, didn't you?
We heard that all the time.
Yeah, I was born and raised there, so I like Ventura.
Well, you've got a very nice room here, your council.
Jim, could you pull that microphone up a little closer to your mouth?
It's my first time since I've been on the city council in Ventura to attend one of your meetings.
Oh, my goodness. And how many years has that been?
Forty.
My goodness.
Trying to catch up to me. You won't make it. I'm here this evening. My name is Jim Monahan, Ventura city council member. I'm here to support the request of the museum, and I want to thank the gentleman Tony Timberley for bringing this forward, and the rest of the council to support him. And Elena said it all. She was with the city of Ventura for a number of years, and we lost her to the museum. But she's doing a fabulous job for the museum. The city of Ventura, the mayor appoints a council member as a liaison to the museum, and that's my job. And I've been going to the board meetings, listening to all of the issues for several years now. And there are a very dedicated group of citizens throughout Camarillo. Some are ranchers, some are lawyers, there are various issues. And I think that what's happening now, the reorganization, is going to really help the operations of the museum, and it's going to be successful. And maybe Camarillo may consider a liaison person that would attend meetings occasionally if they choose to. I'll answer any questions that you'd like.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Mr. Monahan?
We don't have any questions for you, but thank you for coming. And if it took 40 years to get you here, then this must be important.
I'm going to show you down the road. I would see Kevin in the morning, so 8:30, you've got to be there.
It must be Animal Services, is that?
No, no.
VRSD.
Oh, VRSD.
It's the Thursday, trash day.
Oh, sorry.
By the way, I didn't see any of you at Casa. I was really surprised.
We had a council meeting.
Council meeting.
You can cancel that.
Right in the middle of it.
Thank you.
One quick thing. I hope when we appear before you, and one of us does, and I'm sure I will, about some donations to the Ventura County, hopefully, children's museum and potential funding for that big children's museum, which is being worked on now, we get greeted that same way.
How's that?
Friendly and accommodating.
Very welcoming. Remember that.
Any of you have a membership in the Museum of Ventura County? Any of you?
I used to.
I did, too. I didn't know.
I'll bring some over to you. I'll give them to Mike.
Go in there since I was.
Kevin, what am I saying? Anyway, that's the same thing with the board of supervisors. I think there, one member there was a member of the museum. Anyway, we need to all support the museum. It's a countywide facility.
Great, thank you.
And we're all represented here, believe me.
Thank you. Do I have one more speaker sheet? Oh, you've got to put that way down there, Nan.
Good evening, Nan Drake. I am part of the reorganization committee for the museum, but fortunately, my job is done. The museum is an absolute incredible place. Have you ever been there? The collections are amazing. They do represent the whole county. And I think that is part of what the vision is really going to do. It's going to tell the story of each city, how we've grown to represent one of the most, I think, best places to live in California. And it's also going to point out the history of each individual city and how we grew to become that. And we understand that perhaps this vision was not established in the past, but we are looking forward, knowing that we have this huge history behind us. So we need every city to step forward and do their part so that their incredible city will be recognized as part of the history of the whole community that we call Ventura County. My job was to sit on an advisory committee to establish the new board of directors. We have done that. It's a very balanced committee. It represents people who sit on major corporations, who understand how to run a business, what a bottom line is, and they are very excited. We've had people step forward that just can't wait to do business, and that's what we intend to do. So please, tonight, be part of this forward movement to make sure that the history of the whole county is represented by all 10 cities.
Thank you very much.
Just one question. I always want to know this, and I can't, I should be looking it up, but are you the oldest city in Ventura County? I think you are.
We are. Ventura is.
Others continue to claim that a little bit, Santa Paula, Oxnard, so on.
You know what? You were here before you were a city, and that makes you part of the long-term history of the county, regardless of when you incorporated.
Oh, I just want to know which one incorporated first.
I'm sure it was city of Ventura.
I thought it was Santa Paula.
I don't know. I thought it was Santa Paula, too.
Yeah.
It doesn't matter. It's not on the agenda, so let's.
It's just a question. I need to get verified somewhere.
I might be old, but I wasn't there then, so I have no idea.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Nan. Do not have any more speaker sheets? Would anyone else like to address us on this item? Okay. With that, I think we're done with questions. A motion, Mr. Trimbley?
Well, I think we need to talk about it.
Yes, we do.
Well, since I'm the, since I'm the one who's responsible for bringing this to council, I appreciate my colleagues listening to the item. I would ask my colleagues to support this grant. I fully acknowledge that I jumped the gun, but I know that the museum is doing outreach to the other municipalities within the county. I've been fortunate enough to visit the museum, and it is a gem. This is a relatively nominal amount. It's $10,000, but it's a relatively nominal amount, but it's important for two reasons, the way I look at it. One is a sign of support for what the museum does, and the second is to inspire, in my view, other cities in the county to come forward in recognizing the importance of the museum to all of us within Ventura County. And I'm so proud of the council, my fellow council members, for an item that you did earlier this evening, which was with respect to supporting the Ventura County Housing Trust Fund. And as far as I'm concerned, this city stepped forward and showed some leadership in that respect, even though, even though there hadn't been specific projects built in the city, but recognized, council recognized the value of what the Housing Trust Fund does. And by that same token, we should recognize the value of what the museum does. Museums, which you can tell I feel rather passionate about, tell our story. There was a recent letter to the Star, which I really took note of. It was very well-written. And what the writer said is, and I quote, "It's where we go to celebrate shared identities and values, and to honor and experience the cultures and perspectives of others." I can't do, say it more succinctly than that, and I'm often not that succinct, anyway. I think the letter writer hit it, hit the nail on the head. We learn, and our children learn, from these experiences, and we, the people of Camarillo, are a very rich part of that heritage, and part particularly our agricultural heritage. And nowhere is that more exemplified than in the museum's holdings that Mr. Norman told us about, which are on page four specifically, all of the items relating to Camarillo. And the fact that the manuscript materials with the diaries and daybooks and journals of Adolfo Camarillo, and the photographs, the maps, the books and oral histories, et cetera, is, I think, extraordinary. And those items tell our story, and we benefit. So I don't want anyone sitting here or watching on television tonight who is in Camarillo to think that I'm bringing this to give any kind of short shrift to what we enjoy here in Camarillo. We are blessed in Camarillo to have local museums and sites that also tell our story. We have the ranch, the Camarillo Ranch, we have the Pleasant Valley Historical Society, and all the wonderful people who make that possible. The city has supported these and should continue to do so. I think, by that same token, this museum is also worthy of our support. It is a one-time grant. I look on this as an incremental. The museum has to prove itself. I think you heard Ms. Brokaw say that very directly, as well as succinctly, in response to the questions. I'm not asking for any commitment beyond now. We, as a city, if we approve this, we would approve this one-time grant, and the city would receive the same information that the city of Ventura and the county of Ventura are receiving. So I am fully in support of this, and we'll see what the future holds.
Yeah. Craven?
I have a, I disagree with Mr. Trembley. I really think that if we give a part of a bailout gift, I'm not as confident as the people who spoke to us, Mr. Monahan, Nan, and the museum's interim director. I think that they will be back again and again and again. And I don't really, well, let me give you my reasons I wrote down last night. I gave this a lot of thought. The museum is the official curator of the old county documents, including those from the Camarillo area prior to incorporation, and those are county, not city, documents. The city of Ventura owns the museum's properties, so they have an iron in the fire, so to speak, to ensure the success of the museum, which is square in the middle of downtown Ventura. The documents involving Camarillo that are not official county documents and are of historical significance could easily be transferred to the Camarillo Public Library's Camarillo History Collection or to the Pleasant Valley Historical Society Museum. The city of Camarillo already heavily supports the Pleasant Valley Historical Society Museum and the Camarillo Ranch House in the same way that I'm assuming the city of Ventura does. We pay for the building repairs, we maintain things. We're the landlord, and we have a heavy investment in those two museums. We also have supported in various ways, but not nearly as heavily, the Bird Museum, which is a world-renowned, one-of-a-kind museum here in Camarillo, and also the Commemorative Air Force Museum. I believe we support those museums that are located in and related to our local population. The county, for four decades, shirked its responsibility by not fully funding the curatorship of the Ventura County official documents. of the Ventura County official documents, and that is one thing that I think really contributed to this problem. I don't think $125,000 on their part comes anywhere near what they should be giving to help solve the problem. So, I think that we do not have the responsibility the county and the city of Ventura have, or for the branch, the city of Santa Paula, because those are not here, and they're not the official keeper of city of Camarillo documents. The official keeper of city of Camarillo documents is the city of Camarillo. The official records that they do have are not official records, they are for, for us. They are official county records, and their curatorship and care are the responsibility of the county. As I said, I believe that nobody seems to have considered the Camarillo Public Library, but they have Cam, a lot of documents on Camarillo history, and I see no reason why Adolfo's volumes could not be there. Some of them are, I have read them. Some of them are interesting, some of them simply tell how many apricots, or how many, whatever, bush, how many bushels were harvested in a certain week or period, and you go for quite a while, and there are no entries, and then he might have said, "It took him two days to reach the county government center," when he was on the board of supervisors by, by his horse, because the river was high. There are a lot of interesting things, and a lot of things that didn't catch my fancy. But at any rate, with the transfer of those documents and artifacts that are of historical significance, we'd be out of the picture. So, I, I would instead propose that we pay an amount up to $5,000, or maybe even $10,000 to cover the costs anticipated with the transfer of those documents. I mean, that doesn't staff time, and everything doesn't come free, but that's, that's where I could go, and no more. And if somebody comes back in December or June and says, "Gosh, I need more money," it wouldn't get my vote either.
Thank you very much. Any thoughts, Mr. Kilday?
Yeah, you know, this museum is part of our culture, it's part of our history in Ventura County, and I totally understand some of the comments here. Typically, when we give money, we typically, not always, we typically give them for building projects, for instance. Like, for instance, I believe that we gave the CB some money, but they were building, you know, a facility here. We've given the Pleasant Valley Historical Society for many years, I can go on and on about this. My concern is that our own local museums are gonna need funding as well. But I think this is a unique situation here, and I think that for us to try to save this museum here, that you really need to develop a business plan. And typically, we haven't done, you know, funding for these type of, of things, as far as salaries and business plans and things of that nature, but without a business plan, I don't think, I think it's gonna be a real, real struggle for them to survive here. They've, they've got their, their work cut out for them, regardless of what happens. I can support a one-time funding of this, to see if we can't make this viable, to see if we can't salvage this operation here. I think we can talk about what the, the past has been, but I think we have to look to the future here with this. It's, it's not a tremendous amount of money, but our local museums would certainly like to have this money as well, and I think we do not want to lose sight of that. So, in the future, I'm always gonna, you know, look at what our local museums, and remember, there's a possibility we may have a new one, with any luck, come on board here too. So, as a one-time expenditure of money to develop a business plan, to try to save a museum that's been in existence for decades here, I think would benefit a lot of residents, not only our city, but in the county as well. So, I can support this as a one-time, I'm not nearly prepared to go any further than that. I think the council member here has brought up some very, very good points that we need to really think about here in the future, but at this particular point, I think they're not gonna be able to survive at all unless you have a business plan, especially in this environment, which is, as we all know, that is a very challenging environment, regardless of what you do. So, with this business plan, if you can get it, and if you could done it, get it done correctly and right, I think hopefully that you can go forward. But again, I don't want to repeat myself, but I can support this as a one-time expenditure of funds here.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan?
You know, earlier this evening, we had a group called Aggraman, came in, asked, asked for our help and our support. It wasn't money, it was a letter of support, and that's something that benefited the whole community. I'm not talking about Camarillo, but the whole county. With this in mind, I, I see what we've got in Ventura, and I think we need to keep it going and keep the thing, what do you call it, functioning. I, I do agree with most of the people here that, no, don't come back with another $10,000, especially if we ask, if we were to come ask for support from somebody that, you might look at us, too. We have museums, and we have another one coming, and so on and so forth, that we want to be also looked at in this county. And so, tonight, because I think this thing should, should keep going, but now I know we're gonna get a letter, a letter from them, telling us what's going on, like they're gonna do with the county, I think that helps a lot, to let us know that you're functioning, you're going forward. So, tonight, this evening, I'll be supporting this.
Thank you. Well, I had written down a, a few comments, and one of the things that was clarified tonight, and I, I think the way I understood it was, is that the, both the county of Ventura and the city of Ventura had come up quite appropriately with the funds to, to keep them going for the six months, so that, I don't believe our $10,000 is going to make or break their ability to do a business plan. That's what the city and the county did, by granting that, and giving them a timeline. You, you know, either come up with something, and if they don't, then the county of Ventura is gonna have to figure out what to do with their documents, because they indeed have to store those, you know, should store those documents. Museums are struggling everywhere in this nation, it's just, they're looking at creative ways to raise money, and what to do to, to have them survive. And history is indeed important. I also think we have to, and I think supporting that is a good thing, I think we also have to be very careful, and it goes back to the one we had before. You know, the city of Camarillo has worked very hard, and, and we've been very conservative on, on spending and so forth, that puts us in a, in a better situation than a lot of cities do. And there are a lot of, of things throughout this county that people will come to us to help us support countywide. Remember when the county started cutting programs, and all of our grant, when we were doing grants, the audience was full of county agencies even, looking for the city of Camarillo to support them, so.
All our grant money went to pay county employees' salaries.
So, it is something we have to be careful of. I, I, I believe in regionalism, but on the other hand, this, we are the city of Camarillo government, and not a regional government, and so I think we really have to make sure that we're spending the city's money for the benefit of the city. Having said that, I do believe that having something like the, the museum is something that our, our, our community does participate in, and would go to. I remember going to there when I was a little kid, we used to take field trips in school in those days, and that was one of our stops every year, we got to go to the museum. So, it is a treasure that's been here in the county for a long time, long before we were this, a city. Having said all those things, I, I would agree with, I can support it tonight, because we, if we can help a little bit to, to allow them to keep going, but, and I wish them well, I hope they are successful, but I don't think on an ongoing basis, the city of Camarillo should be funding this museum, we should be spending our money on our, on our own. So, to me, that's my compromise, I, I can do it tonight, but not necessarily in the future. So, with that, do we have a motion?
Let me go ahead and make a motion if I can. The motion will be to direct staff to draft a grant agreement in the amount of $10,000 for future council approval, relative to a grant to the museum of Ventura County, to assist with the museum's financial recovery and stabilization.
You have a motion? Do we have a second?
Would you be able to say a one-time?
At this point.
Do you amend your motion? A one-time?
At, at this time.
Yeah.
I, I can say at this time, a one, a one-time.
A one-time.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? If not, please, and that does pass for yes, and with Mrs. Craven voting no. So, with that, oh my, we are late. We have a study session, so we do need to recess to our study session, and we will be back at 7:30. Thank you.